Do what we can do. I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. Mr. Administrator, when you are prepared, please proceed.
Pray with me. Father, we ask your presence in this meeting today. We are grateful for the day and all about the day. We ask, Father, that we pray that all we do and all we say today is in the best interest of the Clay County residents. We ask this all in Jesus' blessed name. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we're standing, one nation, united in heaven, with liberty, justice, and the highest of all.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Here.
Mr. Thompson. Here.
Here.
Is there a motion related to the approval of today's agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion's been made for the approval of the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion, any changes, additions, deletions, or any other alterations to the agenda for today? Seeing no comments, Commissioner Thompson, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
That brings us to meeting schedule. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, the next scheduled meeting of the Clay County Commission will be a business session held on Wednesday, September the 15th at 6:00 P.M.
Thank you. Autumnary resolutions, there are none today. There are no discussion items on today's agenda. No public hearings are listed today. And there is no consent, there are no items under consent agenda. That brings us to our regular agenda. The first item is 2021-235. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-235 is to approve the assessor's bond. This is for the incoming Clay County Assessor, Tracy Baldwin, ministerial and design, but it's still necessary to be approved.
Thank you.
And I don't believe there's anybody here from the assessor's office with any comments.
We'll go into discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this particular item?
No, thank you.
Very well. With that, is the recommendation for the commission to put 2021-235 on next week's consent agenda?
I'm good with that.
Very well. 2021-235 will appear on the consent agenda at our next meeting. That brings us to 2021-236. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-236 is to approve revised contracts for the collection of taxes for cities within Clay County. The two cities on this particular resolution being the city of Glen Air and the city of Kearney. And the collector is here for further comments.
Please proceed.
Carrow Riley, Clay County Collector. These are two more city contracts that we have, and they've been signed. We're just asking for approval.
Thank you. And by the way, you might want to move the mic down just a little, it's kind of...
I beg your pardon?
Move the mic down so it picks you up a little bit better.
That better?
I think so. Very good.
Is that better?
But I think, did everybody hear clearly now?
Yes.
All right, very well. Thank you. Is there any discussion related to 2021-236? I believe if I remember correctly, this item was placed on, items very similar to this have been placed on consent agenda in the past, so is that the, is that good with the commission?
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Very good. With that, if there's no, if there's no, if there's no objection, 2021-236 will be on next week's consent agenda. That brings us, thank you very much. That brings us to 2021 Ordinance 36. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021 Ordinance 36 is to reappropriate and revise the adopted budget for the current year in the Sheriff's Department. I believe the county auditor is here to make some further comments on this.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner. Victor Herbert, Clay County Auditor. Captain Aggerian asked me to fill in for her, just going to be here on a personal matter, so I'm filling in for a sheriff's office. We worked together on this item, 2021 Ordinance 36, and we are requesting same-day passage because it is a payroll week this week, the first week with these officers, SROs, at our elementary schools. So I know I don't want to make this a habit, but just because it is a pressing matter, we'd appreciate that. So this was previously approved at your last commission session by Resolution 2021-232 to authorize this, the setup where it's a great agreement we've reached with the Children's Services Fund and the North Kansas City School District where it's effectively no cost to the county, but we spend it first and then it gets reimbursed when we send them invoices. So what the auditor's office has done with the sheriff's office is we've created a new department in the law enforcement sales tax fund to clearly separate out those costs that we're going to invoice for these four elementary school SROs. And like I said, it's for this payroll effective starting this week because of some status change forms we've seen. We want to make sure it's done before Friday, that the budget is there before we make those expenditures. What's reflected before you is not a full year cost. We will incorporate the full year cost into the 2022 budget with the new anticipated revenue and the expenditures associated with that. This is to get us through the rest of 2021. And we've gone through and identified the costs for those four SROs by every payroll expenditure line. That's really all I have. Take any questions?
You actually anticipated my question, and that was whether or not this would take us to the end of the year as far as we can tell. I mean, as far as projections go, this should satisfy that obligation to the end of the year and into the next budget year.
Correct.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments from the commission?
No, just thank you to the auditor. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
With that, because there is an immediacy to this, I would entertain a motion that we, that we pass 2021 Ordinance 36. Is there, would anyone care to make that motion?
I make a motion to pass 2021 Ordinance 36.
Motion is made for the approval of 2021 Ordinance 36. Discussion, Commissioner Carpenter?
No discussion, other than, you know, I think this makes sense to do. I'm glad that this partnership with the Children's Services Fund is happening, and we're able to get some more school resource officers to North Kansas City Schools.
Very good. Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, Commissioner Thompson, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Auditor. That brings us to 2021, excuse me, 234. Please proceed, Mr. Administrator.
Commissioners, 2021-234 is to approve the use of county grounds and a revocable event license. There's that word again, revocable event license. The Liberty Chamber of Commerce is making that request. It's for the Liberty Fall Festival of 2021. Deputy Administrator Kuntz with Facilities is here for further comments.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator, Facilities. This is a request from the Liberty Chamber of Commerce to, for us once again, to assist letting them set up around the square, around our building, and to use two of our parking lot areas for vendors and for the carnival for their 44th annual fall festival event.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of the deputy administrator?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Very well. Are there, this appears to me, once again, to be something that has been going on for some years, so is it the will of the commission that it be on consent for next week?
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes.
Very well. We have consensus that 2021-234 appears on next week's consent agenda. That brings us to 2021-241. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-241 is to approve the sale or disposal of surplus auction items as stipulated in the Code of Ordinances. Again, Deputy Administrator Kuntz with Facilities for further comment?
Please proceed.
Yes, Commissioners. This has the attached list of the items that will be going to the surplus auction. We did have on August 31st, September 1st, and September 2nd our required three-day viewing of property to see if any other of our departments would have any use of any of the file cabinets, chairs, other miscellaneous items that we have that could be put to use internally before we send them off to auction. And there is also a list of vehicles which are currently located out with our Parks Department that are all slated for this auction.
Okay. And we are, there is, are we under any kind of a scheduling restraints as far as having to pass this today or passing it next week? It's not going to impact what we need to do here?
No, this could remain as a regular agenda item.
Very good. Questions?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Very well. It seems to be another consent agenda item. Does anybody have any other thoughts?
Sounds good to me. Thanks.
That's fine.
Very well. With there no objections, 2021-241 will appear on next week's consent agenda. Thank you, Deputy Administrator.
Which agenda? Excuse me, what agenda are you putting that on? Consent or regular? Consent, okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. That brings us to 2021 Ordinance 35. Mr. Administrator?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask if we could deviate slightly from the agenda. I believe that there's somebody from Purchasing that would make some comments on this, and that person is now being sought out.
Okay.
But with your permission, maybe we could sit, pass this one down later in the lineup in the event we're able to identify that person.
I don't think we really need to vote. It's at the consensus of the commission, just to move this, let's just say to the end of the regular agenda. That might be the most convenient way to go.
Yep, perfect.
Very well. We will revisit that at the end of our regular agenda. That would bring us then to 2021-239. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-239 is to approve a cooperative agreement with the Mid-America Regional Council, something that's an annual event. This is to pay the 2021 membership dues to the Mid-America Regional Council. This is a resolution from the commission, or excuse me, from administration. And the amount that we would be paying would be $53,380. That's an annual membership that we would be responsible for.
Okay. Obviously, this is, has an expenditure, considerable expenditure to it. I'll be, you know, our membership with the Mid-America Regional Council's been something that we've been doing for a long time, so it's, I don't think it's at all controversial that we continue with this relationship. With that, are there any questions and comments from the commission?
Just that I totally agree. I think it's a wonderful organization and a good regional asset, and we ought to, as a big and growing county, ought to be participating, so I'll be in support.
Commissioner Thompson?
I agree. I have no other comments or questions.
Very well. With that, I think that this would qualify as a regular, regular agenda item for next week. Is that consensus? Very well. 2021-239 will appear on next week's regular agenda.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Presiding, we can go back to the regular agenda now if you wish.
Sure, why not? Okay. Mr. Administrator, if you want to go ahead and take up, if that's good with the other commissioners, if we can go ahead and take up 2021 Ordinance 35.
Sure. 2021 Ordinance 35 is to approve an ordinance modification in Chapter 37 of the state of Missouri. This relates to purchasing, and the purchasing manager is here for further comments.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The ordinance modification before you is in regards to state legislator, legislation revised, RSMO 50.660, which increases the limit on spending from $6,000 with one vendor in a 90-day period to $12,000 with any one vendor in a 90-day period. What this ordinance modification is doing is making our county Code of Ordinances in line with the state statute.
With that, is that a recent statute change in Missouri?
Yes, it went into effect August 28th.
Which is typical, of course, of legislation. And you were saying a limit on spending. Could you go ahead? Quite honestly, I think the three of us know exactly what you mean, but just for the sake of those who may be watching, can you expand a little bit on what kind of limits we're talking about and just kind of go into a little more detail?
Absolutely. State statute requires that any expenditure over now $12,000 with any one vendor in a 90-day period needs to be competitively solicited. So if, for instance, if you're buying, if we receive a request for filters, and the expenditure of those filters is going to exceed $12,000 with this one vendor, we need to take that commodity out for solicitation. This also goes into services as well, not professional services, those are a little bit different, but services such as roofing or a general contractor or anything for bridges. Those would all need to be competitively solicited through the purchasing department if there were not a cooperative available that was competitively solicited and advertised and all of that fun stuff. I don't want to bore you with that.
And the reasoning behind having that limit is there is a diminished return on the investment to taxpayers if we have to bid out of items that cost $1,000. The bidding process would exceed any, any benefit that we would receive by going through that process. Is that pretty much what you're thinking?
Yes, sir. And it also should bring some confidence to the taxpayers that we are bidding these products out and receiving the best value for their money, basically. So it's just a, it's a good cross-check oversight to ensure that we are spending taxpayers' money and getting the best value with it as possible.
Okay. Questions, Mr. Carpenter?
No questions, thank you, though.
Mr. Thompson?
No questions, thank you.
Okay. I don't think that this is controversial. It sounds like we're just being in compliance with the state statute. So I'd think if there's no objection, we put this on consent. Does that sound good?
I am comfortable with that, yeah. Another thing I noticed is it's also changing the dollar amount with performance bonds attached to some public works, so going from $10,000 to $75,000, just wanted to throw that out there as well. But again, thank you to Leslie.
Thank you for that.
But I'm good with consent, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, it's a, you know, sometimes these things have other issues in there. Glad you pointed that out. Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm fine with consent. Of course, I'm always the one who, I feel like any, any change of this magnitude, it's, and I know it's very small, but I like the, we're very open and honest, and even with the $6,000 limit, but if we need to be compliant with, with what the state does, I completely understand and...
Well, of course, the idea that we're compliant with state law does not necessarily impinge on the decision as to whether to go consent or regular, so if you would have a more comfort, a higher comfort level going with regular, there's, there's no problem with us doing that.
Let's do regular for now. We're okay with that.
Very well. With that, we will put 2021 Ordinance 35 for next week's regular agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Did I get the right number? Yeah. There we are. That brings us to 2021-238. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-238 is to appoint a Loggers employee representative from this particular organization, the Clay County Government. This is a move or a resolution of the commission, and it is to appoint your humble administrator by name, Tom Salisbury, as the Loggers employee representative for Clay County, Missouri Government.
Very well. And I assume you're willing to assume that responsibility?
I am. By the way, just to clarify further, it's me or a designee, so there is an opportunity for some wiggle room there, but yes, I do, I'm in favor, willing to do it, sure.
Great. Okay. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Carpenter?
No, thank you. I'm totally comfortable doing that. Sounds good.
You might want to do a reference check.
Well, we haven't passed it yet either.
That's right.
Commissioner Thompson, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't, thank you.
Just for clarification, this is, this is a regular occurring exercise we go through as a way to, to be able to have a say in the Loggers issue. So is there any objection to putting 2021-238 on the consent calendar?
Consent fine.
Very well. That brings us to 2021-242. Mr. Administrator?
Commissioners, 2021-242 is to appoint members by number seven to the Clay County Redistricting Commission, which has been, needs to be formed in order to respond to the most recent census commission action. I'll turn the floor back over to you, Presiding Commissioner.
Thank you. Our new constitution outlines this particular method for us to seat a redistricting commission. I think because this is a, this is something that has a good deal of importance to it, my recommendation is going to be that we put it on regular agenda because I think it's good that we kind of go through these and make sure that we have vetted the names that would be in nomination properly. With that, I'll go ahead and I'll make a motion that we, that we place the following names under 2021-242. In the Eastern District, Myron Neath, Stephen Stubbs, Noel Scholl, Ray McClellan. Western District, Sandra Jackson, Barry McCullough, Amy Corlou. And I believe the commissioners may have received most of the applications with the exception of Miss Corlou. I don't believe she's gotten hers in yet, but that should be arriving shortly, which is another good reason to have this on regular so that we can have as full a discussion as we can on that subject. So with that, I will open up the floor for discussion. I believe we're going to need to, at the end of that, I don't know that we need to really vote to have those names put on there. I think that comes later. I would ask about that, but I don't see that as a necessary vote at this point. That's just a matter of filling in the blanks, but if anybody has any, any other opinions on that issue, I would mind hearing them. With that, we will just open it up for discussion. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any thoughts or comments or questions?
I do, thank you, Commissioner. I will say, I was very surprised and very pleased that we have received so many applicants for this board. I'm, I'm very excited. With that, I am still, it's my understanding, we are still getting these in as of today. We had a couple that came in, and I personally have not had a chance to, to go through and see all of them myself. And previously before this meeting, I was under the assumption with staff, we were having a conversation, that we weren't going to be voting on this until the end of September. So I am, I did tell people in our community that we were going to have another two weeks of them to submit applications. So, and I don't, I don't want to make sure that everybody gets their fair share, so I don't know if we're in a rush to get this through in the next two weeks, but I want to make sure that everybody gets the chance to have their, their applications put in and...
That is, and, you know, I apologize if I wasn't clear because I was wanting to do it, you know, in the first few weeks of September. One of my motivations, well, one of the primary motivations for that was to be compliant with the constitution because the, the redistricting commission needs to be seated and to take it up. I believe it's 60 days after we get our, our materials in, after we get the census data in, but I'd be happy to talk to, to verify that with counsel. He's certainly the one most familiar of all of us with the constitution to make sure that I am, that I have him on the right track there.
Yeah, because I want to make sure, because especially since I've been telling people to just get their application in, and I didn't give them that hard date, I just thought it was by the end of September. I just, I didn't want to mislead anybody for the opportunity to help serve on this.
Yeah, I would, I would like to, of course, we did start this discussion a month ago. And I think that, you know, the, but as with many things, sometimes you get a number of pieces of material and towards the end of the, as the deadline draws near, you get more and more. So I would seek some clarification on counsel on that at, you know, during the interim between this meeting and next, and ask him to probably communicate that to all commissioners just as, or I should say, communicate that to the administrator who could then distribute that information. That might be a better way, but we'll work that out. But in any case, you know, we do, we do want to make sure that we're compliant with the new constitution and, and give them enough time to be able to be seated and start considering the information. Because another thing that we, that this year is, this redistricting year is different than others in the past, is the census materials we're getting are coming in considerably later. That obviously applies to all the other political subdivisions, not just ourselves, but that's another, that's another concern that I think, I don't know, was, was avoidable given COVID-19, but it is where we find ourselves right now that we've just gotten the information in. So as far as constitutionally, our deadline for seating this commission is triggered by the receipt of those materials, and I would also want to know what the, I would also want to double check what the date was and those would have been received so we know exactly what our trigger is. So I will research that and ask that that information be disseminated to the commissioners for their consideration. Anything else?
No, no, I just want to make sure that everyone who, who was getting applications on, and even the ones this morning, got a, a fair shake in getting selected, so...
Which is another good reason why we do the list. I read through the ones that came in this morning, and I, that's, that's another reason apart from just the seriousness of the matter, that I wanted to make sure that this appeared on regular because I want to make sure all commissioners had another opportunity to fully discuss any of the names that were on there. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. So I think if the...
one of the primary motivations for that was to be compliant with the Constitution because the, the redistricting commission needs to be seated and to take it up. I believe it's 60 days after we get our, our materials in, after we get the census data in. But I'd be happy to, to talk to, to verify that with Counsel. He's certainly the one most familiar of all of us with the Constitution to make sure that I am, that I, I'm on the right track there.
Yeah, because I want to make sure, because, especially since I've been telling people to just get their application in, and I didn't give them that hard date. I just thought it was by the end of September. I just, I didn't want to mislead anybody for the opportunity to help serve on this.
Yeah, I would, I would like to, of course, we did start this discussion a month ago. And I think that, you know, the, but as with many things, sometimes you, you get a number of pieces of material in towards the end of the, as the deadline draws near, you get more and more. So I would seek some clarification on Counsel on that at, you know, during the interim between this meeting and next, and ask him to probably communicate that to all Commissioners just as, or I should say, communicate that to the Administrator who could then distribute that information. That might be a better way, but we'll work that out. But in any case, yeah, we do, we do want to make sure that we're compliant with the new Constitution and, and give them enough time to be able to be seated and start considering the information. Because another thing that we, that this year is, this redistricting year is different than others in the past is the census materials we're getting are coming in considerably later. That obviously applies to all the other political subdivisions, not just ourselves. But that's another, that's another concern that I think, I don't know was, was avoidable given COVID-19, but it is where we find ourselves right now that we've just gotten the information in. So as far as constitutionally, our deadline for seating this commission is triggered by the, the receipt of those materials. And I would also want to know what the, I would also want to double check what the date was and those would have been received so we know exactly what our trigger is. So I will research that and ask that that information be disseminated to the Commissioners for their consideration. Anything else?
No, no, I just want to make sure that everyone who, who was getting applications on, and even the ones this morning got a, a fair shake in getting selected, so...
Which is another good reason why we do the list. I read through the ones that came in this morning, and I, that's, that's another reason apart from just the seriousness of the matter, that I wanted to make sure that this appeared on regular because I want to make sure all Commissioners had another opportunity to fully discuss any of the names that were on there. Commissioner Carpenter?
Thank you. So I, I think if the provisions of the Constitution will allow, it would also be my preference to, to take the extra two-week cycle here in September. To Commissioner Thompson's point, just in terms of making sure that all people who have actually filled out applications are, are given due consideration. And, you know, if, if there are deadlines that will prohibit that, then as you say, you know, we can check with County Counsel and go from there. But assuming that it would be feasible to do it, I think taking the extra two weeks might not be a bad idea. Just because this is the kind of thing that may get some public attention. It's, you know, redrawing district boundaries is the kind of thing that, you know, can, can get kind of political, obviously. And we want to make sure that we give people the, the most trust that they can have in terms of that this was done in a, you know, completely, you know, fair and nonpartisan way, which is, I think, we all would agree is what the people of Clay County would want from us. So I think, I think that's my thoughts on it. I think next step probably is looking into whether or not doing that is possible.
And the way, the, the schedule that I was, that I was working under, I believe, and I, and like I say, I, I do want to verify, but my understanding was that this was kind of the schedule we were on, given our constitutional constraints. However, I think it is more than worthwhile to go back and verify to make sure that I am correct because, like I say, it, you know, I, I could have gotten, you know, a misunderstanding there. So I want to make sure, I will verify all those facts with Counsel once again and make sure that we are, what, what our schedule is before us. That way, when we have that, we can, we can discuss that when we, when we take up next week's agenda. As far as when we approve the agenda, then we can revisit that if that becomes something that's necessary to do.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, I think that, as I, as I had recommended, if everyone else is okay, we'll put that on regular for next week to allow for discussion.
Yes, I, I am good with that. To clarify though, that does leave us the option of if, if with further information, the two-week window becomes available, we would have the option next Wednesday of, of exercising that at that time.
Right. It would, and again, I would, I would certainly defer to, to Counsel. But my understanding is when we find ourselves next week going through our agenda, my understanding is at the time of the approval of the agenda, it would certainly be in order for Commission to make a motion to change the timing of a particular item, not just this one, but of course, any item.
Perfect.
Can at that time be, be put to a different date.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything further? Very well. That brings us to the conclusion of our regular agenda. Is there a motion related to our today's agenda? Commissioner Carpenter?
I will make a motion to put 2021-235, 236, 234, 241, and 238 on the consent agenda for next Wednesday, 6:00 p.m. And 2021 Ordinance 35, 2021-239, and 2021-242 on the regular agenda for next Wednesday's meeting.
Motion has been made to put various items on our regular agenda, on next week's agenda under both consent and regular, with the exception, of course, of 2021 Ordinance 36, which was passed during our meeting today. With that exception, all other items have been distributed through different agenda, assigned to different agendas for next week's meeting in accordance with Commissioner Carpenter's motion. Discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, any, any comment from the, from the public? Seeing none, you're, you're recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
That brings us to comments on non-agenda items. That brings us to the public. Is, are there any comments from the general public on any items that did not appear on today's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any office holder comments that were not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Are there any agency comments on items not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Mr. Administrator, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
I do, Mr. Presiding Commissioner. Thank you. It's very reasonable to assume that very few people within the sound of our voices don't remember what happened here on American soil in New York City specifically 20 years ago on September the 11th of 2001. And very appropriately, this weekend, there will be some events that take place to commemorate that particular event that took place 20 years ago. And two of them are happening in Clay County that we're aware of, and I'd like to give you notice of both. There will be an event that takes place here at the Veterans Memorial on the Courtyard Plaza, right in front of the Rooney Justice Center, this coming Saturday morning, 9/11 at 9:30 a.m. The City of Liberty, Liberty Fire, and Police Honor Guards, the Clay County Sheriff's Office, as well as VFW Post 4043 and American Legion Post 95 will be participating in this Patriot Day ceremony. And we would encourage any and all that can to be in attendance at that very appropriate memorial. Additionally, later in the day, the Clay County Commissioners and others are invited to attend the Pleasant Valley Firefighters Association, who will be unveiling their 9/11 memorial project for dedication at 11:00 a.m. on the same day, Saturday, September the 11th, in front of the Pleasant Valley Fire Station at 8108 Pleasant Valley Road in Pleasant Valley, Missouri. Again, very appropriate memorials, a day of remembrance, and I hope as many people as can can attend one or both of these events.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. That brings us to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Thompson, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I don't, thank you.
Commissioner Carpenter?
I do not, thank you.
And I think I can also pass on making any additional comments. That brings us to approval of the minutes. I believe we have, I'll turn the page and make sure. I think we have, yes, one set of minutes. Those are for August 11, 2021, 6:00 p.m. meeting. Is there a motion for the approval of the minutes of that particular meeting?
I make a motion to approve the August 11, 2021, 6:00 p.m. meeting minutes.
Motion has been made for the approval of the minutes of the August 11, 2021, 6:00 p.m. meeting. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Thank you, Allison.
Yes?
Yes.
That brings us to written reports, and I believe we have two that have been presented to us.
Yes, we do.
Well, go ahead and turn on your mic there.
I believe they're in front of you right now. We have the August monthly report on revenue and fees from the Clerk's Office, and then we have the August monthly report on the Auditor's cash basis from the Auditor's Office. And that's it.
Very good. We have no executive sessions listed for today's meeting. That brings us to adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Not a peep out of Kevin. It makes me a little worried.
It's not too bad. Forty minutes.
I'll just see the one time we need Kevin.